I'm gonna call the September 3rd meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board to order. Roll call.
Steve Bishop?
Here.
John McCombe?
Here.
David Grant?
Present.
Steve Pike?
Here.
Edward Belcher?
Here.
George Hansen?
Here.
Jayden Ross?
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes of the August 6th, 2019 meeting. Move that the acceptance is drafted?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chair report? I do not have a report. Code enforcement officers report.
Well, I don't have much to report since this is my first day. But I will just introduce myself on the belly. I'm replacing Jeff Hammond, who's done a great job for 21 years. And I've got a lot to learn since he wrote these ordinances. But I've been studying them, preparing for tonight. So I'm looking forward to working with y'all.
Thank you, welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open a limited public forum. It's an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Typically, it's not on the agenda for the night. So if anyone would like to speak about anything not on the agenda, now is your chance. Seeing no one, I will close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. An application for approval of a proposed land-based aquaculture facility on the River Road in the Industry Development and Industry Development Shoreland Overlay Districts. Tax map 1, lots 10-2 and 87. The applicant proposes a phased development that at full build-out will have 945,000 square feet of building area, 1,372,000 square feet of total impervious area, and 1,430,000 square feet of total developed area. The applicant is Whole Oceans, Jacob Bartlett, CEO. So Luke, would you have anything to present to us?
Just briefly, I'm gonna go through some of this and then I'll let John take over from CES representing Whole Oceans. So the Whole Oceans application involves the large industrial project, which is a major redevelopment of a large portion of property that was formerly occupied by the Versal Paper Mill. Upon completion, the project, as you said, will have a developed area of just under 1.5 million square feet. The project has been classified as a change of use subject to the Level 2 review, which is why we're here tonight. And that is in accordance with the requirements of Section 10 of our town's land use ordinance. The zoning for the project is the Industrial District as well as the Industrial District Shoreland Overlay. Both of those are appropriate for the proposed use after the Level 2 review, according to Table 5, 9.510, which is in Appendix K on page 9-18. Jeff Hammond and I have met with the project engineer. And he's, like I said, he's the authorized agent for Whole Oceans. So we had the pre-application meeting. That went well. Both Jeff and I have completed a preliminary review as required. And Jeff had a couple of small items that he wanted some clarification on. One was height dimensions, which have since been provided to me by John. And another was on the percentage of shoreline zone that was covered, percentage of lot coverage. And the last was the planting plan. We've gotten answers on each of those items from CES. So I'm comfortable with the pre-application review as stated. The one item that is of note, and there's a reason for it, is that they have not paid their site plan application fee. And that's because we're towns in the process of redoing the fee schedule. And that will be a difference of almost $17,000. So it's worth waiting to make sure we get it right. And I think that'll be determined within the next week or so by the town council. So we've, Jeff and I both have asked them to just hold off on paying the fee until we get that straightened out. Otherwise, it would be done. Certainly, it's not anything that they aren't capable of doing. So I don't think that should be a factor in holding anything up. It could be a condition of approval if we get that far tonight. Next step in the phase is each department head was given access to the application. I've communicated with each of the department heads, and there was no concern from any of them. Notice of the application in tonight's review meeting was mailed out to all the butters on August 22nd. I have not heard back from any of them. And I received only one communication from a non-abutter. And that was from somebody with the Tawdy Pond Association, who's just concerned about the amount of water being used. I explained what the application says about that. They may still come and ask some questions tonight, I'm not sure. At this time, there's no waiver request being made by Whole Oceans, up to my knowledge, unless something's changed. And I prepared a little brief videos of some different points on the site, just so you can see where we're talking and what the current view is. I took these last Friday. So this should help you be familiar with the areas we're gonna be talking about tonight. Hopefully, avoid the need for a site visit. So we'll start with this point A, which is down near the old woodyard. As you can see, pretty much everything is gone. Point B is just a little further up. You can see in these, a lot of the concrete footings and materials that Whole Oceans will have to take out when they start their earthwork process. Point D is over here, right near where the wastewater treatment plant used to be. And point E is down here on the bottom of the site, closer to Route 15. Kinda sad for those of us that are used to seeing all the stuff there. Times change and time for something new. Point F is down by the pump station. And Whole Oceans does own a sliver of land along the shoreline that goes over to that pump station so that they can use that area.
They have right-of-way access.
I believe they actually own a sliver of land. I could be wrong. Yeah, most of that is not theirs, but I'm just showing you what its current state is. And that's all I have to show you unless you have any questions. I'll turn it over to CES.
Anyone have any questions? So you mentioned height. Some of the questions that you and Jeff came up with, was it the height of the buildings?
Yeah, there was no elevation views, which is typical for, there's still on the site.
Exactly. Yeah.
But they do know that they'll be, where's the blur here? They'll be between 25 and 55 feet, depending on the building. And the ordinance says that the max height is 100 feet in that district, so they're well within that, so no problem there. The percent coverage of non-vegetated surfaces in the shoreline zone is 8.8%. And the planting plan will be prepared for the project as final construction design drawings are prepared. So, again.
Planting and stuff in America, I don't think there's any.
There will be some, but it's not. I'll let John answer that, he'll explain.
Okay, are there any other questions for Luke?
All right, I turn it over to you, John.
Thanks, Luke. John Witten Jr. with CES. And I'm actually gonna have Jacob Bartlett do an introduction as CEO of Whole Oceans.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Bartlett. I'm the CEO of Whole Oceans. Thank you to the planning board for the opportunity to present our site development plan to you and to the public tonight. We're excited to bring this land-based aquaculture to the town of Bucksport in the state of Maine. We look forward to working with you all and to keep this project moving forward. Just a little bit about my background, so you guys are familiar with me. Back in 2005, I developed a software bio-tracking system for aquaculture. I ended up selling that company to the largest aquaculture development company land-based in North America. As a part of my role, I helped the company land the project to design and construct the first ever land-based salmon farm in the US, and the largest aquaponics farm in the world. So I've been in the aquaculture business for over 14 years. I'm excited to be working on this important project with you all and in the great state of Maine. Whole Oceans is made up of a team of experts, and I would like to introduce these folks now. I've flown them in pretty much all over North America. I have Gary Robinson from British Columbia. He handles our bio-planning, our system, he works with the system engineering out of British Columbia. He's our expert. 30 years of experience in farming salmon. I have Kevin Tate. Kevin recently joined us. He's our finance expert. He comes from Boston, previously working in real estate business. He's what they call a "mayner." He's giving me the terms now. He's from Southern Portland. We have Jennifer, which everybody knows. She's famous here, it seems. She's handling our outreach and our development. She has 10 years of experience working in the aquaculture space, and she's been a big, very big help to our team navigating and learning, you know, the ins and the outs of this town. Last, we have Nick Pranger. Nick is the CEO of PR Aqua. PR Aqua is one of the engineering groups that we're using on this project. Nick has been in the business for almost 15 years as well, building land-based aquaculture facilities. He actually built the largest aquaculture facility in North America, about seven years ago, I think it was. And since then, was a part of the first ever salmon farm on land in Wisconsin, and the largest aquaponics facility in the world. We have Bill Taylor and Brian Rayback from Pierce Atwood are also here with us this evening. They've been involved in, with the efforts of obtaining the necessary state permits, big help for us. And then finally, John Wheaton. He's with CES. He's been handling this whole land use permit. But I would like to thank you again for working with us. And I'll turn the meeting over to John.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jacob. Again, John Witten Jr. with CES. And with me tonight is Mike Thompson with CES. He's the overall product manager of the project for us. But right now, I'd just like to kinda do a project overview for you and just do a quick summary of the application. It's pretty thick, and I don't wanna go into too much detail, but I wanted to give you an idea of what the whole thing is about. So to start, we're showing the overall property that's currently under the ownership of Whole Oceans. It's displayed here with the green, bright green lines. It's a total of just under 104 acres of land that was currently, was formerly owned, excuse me, by the AIM Corporation. And obviously, before that, the Versal Paper Company. So the property does encompass quite a bit of the former actual mill site, mostly the woodyard and wastewater treatment areas, with some storage tanks near the river. There is quite a bit of river frontage and quite a bit of railroad track frontage along the property. And the access points to the property are existing now. There's a north access point here on Route 15, which is the former truck entrance to the old woodyard and the scales, and a south entrance here that's now going to be a shared entrance with the other lots that are either sold or currently for sale in the southern part of the site. You will notice that there is a fee ownership of a strip of land along the river here to that pump house. Additionally, there is an access easement, a utility easement, that pretty much doubles that width over what is shown in Lot 3 of the subdivision plans. So there's a combination of actual fee and ownership there plus easements. And there's access easements and utility easements over the entrance and along Route 15 as well. That's to ensure that Whole Oceans can connect to existing utilities for their use. As already brought up, we're in the Industry Development Zone. That means we have just a 50-foot setback from the front of the property, 10-foot side and rear, and 25 from the river. And we have three lots in total. This parcel here is Lot 1 of Parcel 2 in the subdivision that was recently formed by the AIM Corporation. This small parcel here is out of Parcel 1, it's Lot 2A, and the larger piece is Lot 2 out of Parcel 1. The applicant proposes to take this construction on in phasing. This is gonna be an earthwork phase, which will be the first phase, and I'll get into plans on that a little bit later. But that's basically what it sounds like. They're gonna start with a digging and demolition process, and then it would move into actually building, the first building for aquaculture and hatchery, and then one of the larger buildings after that, followed by, in sequential order, the buildings that they need to build up their processing yields. One thing that we are asking for, the applicant is asking for, is due to the time of this, it is expected that full build-out won't happen for a 10-year period or so. And in fact, our Site Location and Development Act permit that we've applied for to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection is a long-term construction application permit, which is for phased developments that are gonna take at least 10 years. And so one of the provisions in your ordinance is that the life of a cyclone is, I believe it's two years. But you have a provision to extend that to five years, and the applicant is asking that be done. And obviously, we expect to be asking for extensions of that when that time comes. The application itself, oh, I had more here. Okay, hold on. So I did include a tax map to give you a better location of the site and the town. We take up two or three lots on Tax Map 1. And also, this is the zoning map that shows you that we're in the ID zone, and we have Buck up against the village zone and the downtown district as well. And those setbacks and everything are shown on our plans. This is table contents of the application itself. It may not be exactly clear and focused, but there's 31 sections. What we tried to do here is have a separate section for each of your findings of fact that hopefully we'll be getting to through the process of these meetings. And we provide narrative support of what we believe is information on how we are meeting the ordinance with our proposed design and facilities. So we'll get into that a little bit more. Currently, we are, like I mentioned, we have applied to the DEP for a Site Location and Development Act permit that is under review right now. We expect approvals on that in early October. We've had very little review comments come back on that, but we are waiting the last round of those comments as we speak. The applicant has entered into a voluntary response action plan with the DEP in 2018, VRAP for short. Basically, that's a plan to react to any contaminated soils or hazardous waste that may be on the site from previous users. And that's in the application. The applicant has also applied for and been approved for a Main Pollution Discharge Illumination System permit from the DEP and a waste discharge license. And that permit and license currently allow for 18.6 million gallons a day of water to be released back into the river. And has many provisions for how that water needs to be treated and all of that. That information is available through public documentation, and we have people here that are way better at the specifics of that permit than I am. The basics are that the applicant expects to generate 5,000 metric tons of fish for processing in their first phase of development, and are looking to be at 10,000 metric tons or over once they're fully in operation. To put that into empirical, I guess you'd call it, terms, it's that 5,000 metric tons is 11 million pounds, and 10,000 would be 22 million pounds of fish. And included in the slotter permit, we have an NRPA permit request in there as well, and that's for disturbing land within 75 feet of the river. And that's just part of the slotter review. And air emissions license has to be applied for as well as part of that review. So the expectations of that is a few of the HVAC units may need to be included in that, and also emergency generators would have to be included in that air emissions license. Overall, we don't expect much of the site to emit any emissions that would be abnormal to an industrial use. And certainly be, I would think, less than what the paper mills was putting out. Let's get into the phasing of the project. This is an overall site plan. It kinda focuses in on the development area. So this is the property on the east side of Route 15, which is currently a big parking lot that was used for employees of the mill. This will remain as a parking lot, with the exception of a proposed 45,000 square-foot building in this area. This building could be used for visitor center, offices, and warehousing, a variety of uses that may come up as the operation kind of gets constructed and gets felt out. The first building that would be built for the aquaculture operation is this building here, what you call the freshwater building. It's also a hatchery building. And that's kind of an obvious first build, because we've gotta get these fish from the egg stage to actually being fish, and get them to a certain size before they can be moved into the saltwater tanks, which would be located in this larger building, which we're calling the South Grow-Up Building. This would have interior tank and water filtration systems to actually raise the salmon from a small fish up to a fish of currently 10 to 12 pounds to be processed and sold as a product. That would be the second building to be built. And then, basically, a mirror image of that building would be the North Grow-Up Building. And that would basically just expand capacity and yield of fish. And then various support buildings would be constructed to support that aquaculture use. There are ancillary buildings that we talked about in the phasing. Those buildings are here, here, and across the street. So these three buildings would be the last buildings built in the phases. And as I said, the uses of those buildings are kinda to be determined. But we put them in both permit applications as kind of placeholders to give everyone an idea of just how big they would like to be and how much land they wanna take up with this process, this facility. All the shaded areas, basically pavement that provides access around the buildings. And we do have some support systems down in the southwestern part of the site that would represent water treatment areas and wastewater treatment areas. As of right now, the wastewater from these tanks is expected to be treated on-site and then discharged back into the river under the DEP permits that they have. And through existing, feeding the system will be pumped from the Penobscot River itself with an existing pump house. And they're proposing to use around 14 and a half million gallons per day of water from the river, where the average use of the mill was 72 million gallons a day. of water from the river, where the average use of the mill was seventy-two million gallons a day. And the other source of water is the raw freshwater pipeline that comes down from Silver Lake. They propose to connect into that in the utility easement area, bring that water into their facility. And currently have agreements for about four million gallons per day out of that system where the mill used to take about eighteen million gallons a day back when it was operating. Domestic water, we have water from the main water companies so that they can serve the project for domestic water. That would be for use of basically employees and visitors. We expect that to be around forty-eight hundred gallons per day, compared to upwards of a hundred and seventeen thousand gallons per day when the mill is operating. And again, that would be domestic water use and a discharge back to the sewer, the town sewer, for the domestic use of the facility. The wastewater discharge does not include processing, because processing is kind of up in the air right now. But any processing that would take place on this facility would need additional permitting through the DEP and additional review by the town sewer district. We do propose to maintain fire hydrants around buildings. As I said before, access will be through the existing access points along Route fifteen. There will be security fencing around the site for biosecurity reasons. So there will be manned gates or security personnel at each gate. And we will coordinate with the fire and police departments to make sure that they have access to those gates whether a person is there or not. That would allow at least three access points to the site for public safety reasons. I guess that's really it. The earthwork phase would take about twenty-two acres of land is what we have predicted would be the first phase of the project. That would be basically removing the earth and rock and other site features that have not been removed by the AIM Corporation already to, down to the footing elevation, the proposed footing elevation of the buildings, and basically get the site ready for construction. But no actual utility installation or concrete installation would happen until we get the next phase approved by the DEP. And that means that we would be submitting final design, construction plans to the DEP, have them reviewed, and give the applicant the okay to start that construction. We expect this phase to happen this fall, early winter. And while this is happening, we expect to be updating the DEP with plans and new folks as needed. And would look to start actual construction and utility installation in the spring, you know, May or June of 2020 on that freshwater hatchery building. So the permit with the DEP is kind of an overall placeholder. It has each phase, and as each building gets more specialized and designed, we get in there and get an updated approval from them. So we're giving you an overall scheme of the property. We don't expect it to change significantly. But the building shape here and there may change. You know, we show loading docks in the corners. That there may be some slight, you know, we may add an additional loading dock or have an inset or an outset somewhere. But we will not be leaving this basically development rectangle that we're proposing. And an important fact here is that there's some large numbers out there. You know, we're talking a million square feet of developed area. But remember that we're only proposing sixty-five thousand square feet of new developed area. Everything else is redevelopment. And the only thing that's new are those two, are the two ancillary buildings out here. Those would actually be in an area that's currently undeveloped on the site. So the building over here would be over the parking lot. Everything else here would be overall, the old developed area of the site. And then really, the only other thing, we are looking to expand the substation onto the applicant's property here to supply the electrical supply. That's where the emergency generators would be located as well. And we are proposing to expand the existing stormwater pond. And basically, the majority of stormwater would be directed to that pond. It would be a wet pond, go through a gravel outlet, and then release to the river as it is today. And that's all being reviewed by the DEP at this time. And from the review comments that we've gotten so far, we feel that that design is very solid and approvable. With that, I would just remind you that we do have a team of people that would answer questions if you have questions. And we are here to answer those questions and we feel to go through the application review.
Just a real quick question on the buildings themselves.
What's that?
On the buildings themselves, what do you anticipate for roof slopes? Are they gonna be pitched roof, low slope roof?
That is a great question. So the thought is that they would be flat roofs with, you know, equipment on the top. And then, these are renderings from, this one is from Route fifteen side of the property. So east looking west, this would be the freshwater building. This would be the south on grow building. And then in future, there would be another building kind of here and go to the right of this screen. These trees here are existing on Route fifteen now. So just to give you perspective of what's there now. And so obviously, Route fifteen is down on this elevation of the drawing. There would be those trees, there would be Route fifteen, some rail tracks, those trees. And then a new retaining wall behind the trees, and the buildings would be at that elevation, basically the top of those trees. The freshwater building and any support buildings would be around the twenty-five foot height. And the grow-out buildings are looking to be around fifty-five foot height.
These are all P E M Bs, pre-engineered metal buildings?
That's the thought now, yes.
So the slope is actually towards the river, the roof slope?
Yes, yep. And roof runoff will be collected and put into that stormwater pond.
There's a lot of surface area there.
It is, it is.
But your second grow-out building, the roof drainage for that building doesn't go to the pond?
Yeah, about half of it does not, you're right, yep.
You're right, why?
Just because of the numbers. With DEP, it's a redevelopment project, so there's a whole point system on how much impervious area we need to treat and how much we can, that we don't have to treat. And so that the numbers worked out that we didn't have to treat that back half of the second on grow building. And there is one more rendering picture here of kind of a breakdown. These two are, that's east looking west, again, Route fifteen in the front of the grow-out building. This is looking from the riverside in. And then these two are east and west elevations of the freshwater building. And you can see that we put a dimension on there, twenty-five feet and fifty-five feet.
Any other questions?
I have a question. As far as the demo work that AIM has done, they have to do more, is that correct, on your parcels?
So the, as I understand it, they're responsible for taking everything down to the ground elevation. And there's a water tank or two that will remain as Whole Oceans' property. Whole Oceans is looking to re-reverse at least one of those tanks and is looking at options for the others. But yes, demolition will have to occur of everything that's at or below grade.
And you think that'll happen in a timely manner?
Yeah, that will be the proposed first phase, is getting that stuff out of there and blasting and excavating rock and the native material down to the footing elevation. Which the footings are looking to be, I think they're around elevation fourteen-one. And the grade at Route fifteen is, at the south entrance, is around elevation twenty. And the elevation...
Existing wood yards around forty.
Yeah, this is around forty all through here. And then the rise in this area actually does get up to about elevation eight right at the height of the site. So this area will be taken down. This area will be pretty much at grade for the bottom of the building, and then we'll build up from there. The actual finished floor of the elevation, finished floor of the buildings will be about elevation ten.
We could maybe put a pill under there.
Well, it's, yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on.
If you could continue to elaborate on that, in your plan, it talked about excavating quite a ways down to support the weight. I assume it's for the tanks?
Yes, yeah. So we had a geotactical report done with SW Coal. And there are a couple of areas in this back corner, and I think up in this area, that have pretty deep clay soils. And it was their initial recommendation to excavate that clay soil out and put structural fill back in to be able to support the weight of these tanks and buildings. And Whole Oceans is investigating what the best methods are to do that, whether it's just take that out, fill it in, or sheet pile, or is it preload. So they're working with SW Coal on that to finalize that.
Is Chimbrough also listed as a part of that in your plan?
Yes.
Is that what I saw? Do you have a representative from Chimbrough here?
I don't believe we do tonight. But as of right now, yeah, they would be the general contractor type person for this construction. Anything else?
Anybody else? So, does, I think I know the answer, but is anybody, is there any bias or any conflict of interest or anything before we move forward? Okay? So does anyone from the public have anything they would wish to say? If you do, please come up to the podium and identify yourself. Unless everybody here is for, you know, working for Whole Oceans. Seeing no one, we'll move past that. And I think maybe if there is any public comment, we could probably try at the end as well. So let's start our application review. So unlike, like many of the ones we've seen recently, they've offered the suggested answers to each of ours. So if we want to go to the sections that they suggest, and if anybody has any questions, I just, I don't want, we want to make sure we do a thorough enough job where no one has any complaints.
So this is section five, I believe, soils covered in section five. I have them all listed.
Yeah, that's right.
Goes numeric from here.
Other than the clay mentioned and some of the wood, the rotting wood-like material that was found in some of the test boards, does anyone have any issues with soils?
Not on the site of the mill itself, but the lot eighty-seven across the street, the parking lot, that used to be a log yard area, and that's a lot of organic, so you know, old bark and stuff.
So that's in the area where they're gonna put the, that smaller...
Ancillary.
That kind of ancillary.
Like admin or office building?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think heavy weights will apply to that ancillary building the way it would for the aquaculture buildings. So I don't think it's as relevant.
When the balance loading and the big aquaculture buildings, yeah. That would have to be all included in.
Just to be clear, those are the only two areas where they're gonna have to excavate that deep to support the weight of anything. It's gonna be, that's gonna be out of the ordinary, correct?
Part of the difference between the floor elevation excavation, all the piping is under the building. The area can explain more afterwards, but that's part of the reason you'd see those excavations.
Okay, okay. So is that installing new or leaving some of what's there?
For the material, the, I understand that if we excavate down to like the forty-one feet and you build it back up, where your piping borrowed coming in to support that.
Right.
So interior to the foundations were all piped.
And that's just gonna be in those two buildings? That's not gonna have anything to do with the two ancillary buildings you have out?
No, the freshwater building would have piping and then the two grow-out buildings.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Can I just interrupt for just a second?
Please.
When you answer questions, if you could come up to the microphone, because there's a lot of people watching at home, this is all being streamed live. And they can't hear you unless you're speaking up. I know it's a pain, but they can't hear unless you come up.
So it says blasting is required for the ancillary building. Are those the buildings that you mentioned are on the current, the undeveloped area?
Right, yeah, they'd be along the north axis, yeah.
So is everybody all right with the description with the soils as they have described in here about possibly overexcavating or doing those, the name that just slipped out on my head, the piles?
Yeah, the granular borrow.
I think it's an excellent report by...
Yeah, Cole did a really excellent job, I thought.
They covered it very well.
Those buildings, all the foundation work, soils, whatever is supporting that will all be engineered.
Oh, I understand that. But I mean, we wanna...
There may be various types of variations in the foundation due to loading.
But sitting here right now, you're okay with that thought going forward?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So we can move on to the next. All right, that's what I'm trying to get at. How about stormwater runoff? You mentioned half of that, that north grow-out building.
Yeah, about forty percent of it is through a thirty-inch pipe that flows just flow over the ground to the river. just flow over the ground to the river, won't be, uh, in a settlement pond or anything.
Which is better than what's there right now, so. Because right now, the whole site's just gonna flow to someplace.
Yeah.
Well, it didn't use to, because the pond that they're going to use already exists as a settlement pond for site water, you know, and built for them, so.
But they're, are you, are you okay with their narrative as far as how they're gonna treat the, the stormwater runoff?
Most of it, yeah, the other forty percent is not going to be treated, it, it's just gonna be, uh, treated through surface runoff through existing vegetation to the river, as, as it's filtered.
But like,
But it's all right.
You described, and it's, it's all calculations of what's allowed and what's points of.
Phosphorus calculations, stuff like that, those meet, uh, D E P requirements, so.
It's the shortest section, it's only two pages long.
Yep.
One short.
So, all right, that's, so I guess we're okay with that? All right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, um, number three, the soil that they're, that they exposed during any disturbance will be adequately protected.
Section seven. Soil erosion and sedimentation, section seven.
As you, you say often, the, their best management practices with the, with the berms and the, the hay bays and all that.
Oh, and dust control, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number four, surface and subsurface waters are adequately protected from the detrimental effects of any water pollutant from the land use. Anybody have any problems with that? Can we move on?
Yes.
Okay. Five, ambient air environment is adequately protected from the detrimental effects of any air pollutant from the land use?
I don't think there is any other than just, just typical H P A C and S and stuff.
In the, in the eventual, uh, emergency generators, I mean, that, whatever, but that's minimal, especially compared to the previous user.
Yeah, it's, it's gone down, I mean, it's less dust than before.
Right.
By far, so it's an improvement by several orders of magnitude, I'm sure.
So, I'm gonna move on, and I'm just gonna keep going unless someone stops me.
Sounds good.
Significant wildlife habitat or other important habitat is identified in the Bucksport Comprehensive Plan as adopted are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of land use.
Let's see, that one's actually not applicable, is there any in that area?
Sounds good, all right. Seven, vegetation within any applicable shoreline district is protected from exis, excuse me, excessive cutting or removal. And they do claim about they're gonna remove some vegetation, but, I mean, what's there now is just uncontrolled weeds in most of those areas.
Yeah.
Correct.
Most of it's gonna be in those two ancillary buildings up on the, in, in depth group. That's not heavily vegetated.
Is that, uh, is that the shoreline?
No, not that area.
No, that's, that's not,
So, close to the shore.
No.
Relevant to this point, so.
No, shumac.
Can we move on?
Please.
So, a site visit, um, in special conditions to ensure compliance, we do those now or do we come back and do those after? I forget. We don't need a site visit, do we?
No. No.
We all know what it looks like.
Yeah, we've been manned on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, I gotta move on. I'm gonna move on to the special area standards. Number one, areas prehistoric and historical importance are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect, effect of the land use, excuse me. They identified two areas, but they're not within, uh, they're closed, but they're not within, uh, footprint to be worth.
Right.
Yeah. Really not applicable.
And, and they have mentioned that if,
If they found something, yeah.
Something appears, then it's stopped.
The Ark of the Covenant or something, right.
Noah's Ark, in the woodpile. Uh, two vistas of scenic value are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. And it's mentioned in here several times, I think those buildings are gonna look a lot nicer than, no offense to any mill-loving people, but,
It's a better view.
No, Paper Mill is not an attractive-looking site, so.
Yeah, I had a note that that, that description looked right.
No, but.
But four hundred and thirty-five million generated a lot more income.
Well, that, we're not here to discuss that right now, so. Number three, areas for public access to water bodies, wetlands, and areas developed with commercial fisheries and maritime activities are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. Yeah, we don't even have any commercial fishery or maritime activity up there really, except for the, the oil barge come in every so often.
What do you guys have down there for, for that particular, uh?
So,
Section fourteen, fourteen.
Yeah.
Well.
Yes, there are no, um, you know, dock facilities along their frontage, um, and not, you know, we can put any thing on, on, on this, on, uh, on this frontage, so, uh, yeah, they're, they're not proposing any, uh, water access and, and as far as, uh, we can tell, we're not impacting any, um, any either.
And this, and, and it says in the narrative that, you know, they're not gonna have like a, a path, you, you can park and go, take a walking path down to the river to, to go fishing on the shore or anything, so, and you couldn't do that when it was the mill, so.
It did mention they were gonna extend some of the, some of the waterfront, correct?
Hmm?
Yes.
Uh, extend some of the waterfront.
The, the walkway.
Now, I'm at the walkway.
Yeah, so, so a- any of that recreational space would have to be, uh, over here on the, the northern side, this, the, and certainly not within the perimeter of the facility itself.
Because of the biosecurity.
Just because of the biosecurity.
Yeah, what, what you were thinking of is something that maybe Eames property that they still retain, maybe develop, but.
Yeah, I just remember seeing one of the maps in the packet, a, a green, a green dotted line that went through along that.
I'll speak to that real quick. Um, so the map that he's referring to is out of the adapt plan.
Yes.
And so that was when we were looking at having more of a campus, um, integrated with main maritime, and if there was going to be some additional buildings built. Um, but where main maritime has their lot, and we're worried about the biosecurity for ours, it's gonna be kept pretty separate, but we are planning to, to work with them on some programs and all that kinda different things, so.
So, that potential.
So, the, the green dotted line would go pretty much right through the hatchery building, as it goes on this one. Um, so, but we are looking to definitely, um, encourage that, and we've also looked at maybe supporting, um, other trail networks in the area, something like Silver Lake, I know that they're working on that a bit, so. That's, that was something that specifically came out of the adapt plan as a potential possibility, um, but with the way the site's gonna be laid out, it doesn't look like that's gonna fit exactly where they were looking at. So, it's definitely something that we, we talk about, um, and we look at within the, the scope of the whole project.
But it has nothing to do with this application.
Correct.
Correct.
But I knew it was from you, Zach.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Number four, areas flood hazard adequately protected from any detriment, uh, relevant detrimental effect of the land use. I believe the only area that's listed in floodplain is across the street, and it might not even be there. It might be that small sliver of green on the bottom side of Route fifteen.
Yeah, it's on the east side of Route fifteen.
And is there anything actually going over in that area?
No, actually, the, the only flood zone that's mapped is obviously the river, but we're not getting into any of that.
That's Mill Creek.
There's an old, yeah, an old creek bed here apparently that's still on the map, and, uh,
Is that where, I thought it was up.
Yeah, it's right through there, and this, this little wooded area, scrub brush area, is shown as a floodplain on the maps, so. Uh, and we're, we're not impacting that area at all with this.
So, not applicable, really.
Number five.
That stream goes under Route fifteen, under the railroad tracks and dumps out by the cap in the building.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Number five, areas with unique natural character identified in the Bucksport Comprehensive Plan as adopted are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. Is there any unique natural character in that area?
The river.
I don't think there's any.
I haven't seen comprehensive plans, like.
Don't say that, you have a copy of it, you should have read it from cover to cover.
That was brutal. Bathroom reading.
So, I don't, I don't see that as a issue?
No, no, I don't either.
Local area standards? Well, number one, the scale and site features of the land use are consistent with the development patterns in the local area or neighborhood.
Joints with the previous development.
Change of use.
Yeah, just a change of use.
Right, yeah, that's what I had for a note, too.
What's that?
Yeah, we were talking change of use in comparison to what, to what was there, it's not a.
And it's still better than, I, I think, a, a more attractive use than, than what was there, so. Uh, it's a step in the right direction, especially better than what's there right now. Uh, two, the land use is appropriately separated and shielded from abutting land uses and public or private ways to adequately mitigate any relevant detrimental effect. Their buildings are gonna be secured, there'll be a, uh, controlled access through the fence, so you won't have any MMA people, you know, accidentally wandering through the grow-out building anymore, so.
If they're wandering, it probably won't be for long.
Is that left undetermined right now, whether you're gonna have someone at half the gates or whether or not they'll just be locked?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a check-in, uh, before they, before anybody enters the facility for the biosecurity purposes. I'll just answer that with a microphone, they, they will, sorry, the, the, the plan is to have actually, yeah, secure, uh, security personnel at those, uh, at the gates.
So, is this, uh, a twenty-four-seven operation, or is it, you know, first shift, second shift, or, or what?
Twenty-four, twenty-four hours.
So, there'll be people working, three shifts?
Yep.
Anybody have any issues with number two? Three, any relevant detrimental effects of electromagnetic fields from the land use are adequately mitigated? I don't think this, the equipment, I mean, they'll, they'll have some pretty massive pumps in there, but the, I, I still think the electrical demand will be less than what was, what was in the metal.
Number of times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the.
Takes more energy to produce a pound of paper than it does produce a pound of steel.
Uh, again, I'm just gonna keep moving on, any relevant detrimental effects of artificial lightning, uh, lighting, excuse me, from the land use are adequately mitigated?
Everybody else's book turned upside down at this point?
Site lighting, site lighting is all in the building.
Oh, yours is all.
Yeah.
I had to put mine back together two or three times. Could I?
Go ahead.
Please, just a question on the, the site lighting itself, is that gonna be all building-mounted, or are you gonna have some pole-mounted?
Uh, the thought right now is, is to have it all building-mounted, um, yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, there, there may be a, a pole or two at, at the entrance gates, um, but, uh, as of right now, we just are, are looking at wall pack units just to, to keep, basically, security lighting around those buildings.
Cut-off shields, they're all cut-offs.
Yeah, all cut-offs, downward angle lights, so.
Thank you. Any relevant detrimental effects of noise from the land use are adequately mitigated?
What kind of noise do fish make anyway? I never heard anything like that.
I'm told that they sing.
That's massive.
I have a story about that, but not for another, that, that's for another day.
Would the generators be the noiseiest thing? If, when they, when they go, when they, if they happen to run? Uh, probably.
Yeah, the indication is that, that, um, yeah, that would be the, the loudest thing, um, and, and really because it's gonna be exterior of the buildings themselves. Uh, but they will be housed in, in sound deadening, uh, housing anyway, so. And there's quite an extensive section on noise in there, because we had to prepare that for the slow-to permit, um, so we just kinda reiterated it here for you guys, but, uh, noise will be kept to the state levels, um, and, uh, those levels change according to use, and, and with the church now being right across the street, uh, we have to pay particular attention to that and any residential properties, um, that are abutting the, the land, so, uh, we've taken that all into account and, and will position things accordingly to, to meet those desirable levels.
Did you see that on those, did you see the, the measurements or the distances from the church property to the eastern property?
Yeah.
Any relevant detrimental effects of nuisance odors from the land use are adequately mitigated? That's probably gonna be the biggest question on everybody's mind.
Well, it's all, it's all explained in here how they're mitigating.
Yeah, five thousand metric ton of salmon smell like, so.
Process.
I live in several hundred yards from where the facility will be, so there are certain sections that I really picked an interest on. And this was one of them, and I'm very satisfied with what you're putting in, I am, I'm very satisfied with it.
Anyone else? Any, anyone less satisfied?
As long as we don't have any open drying areas.
Uh, seven, solar gain utilized by active or passive solar energy collection systems that may be impacted by the land use is adequately protected.
Does not seem applicable.
Anybody close enough to be affected?
Not very, I don't think that's applicable.
Number eight, any relevant detrimental effects of smoke and dust from the land use are adequately mitigated? Uh, the, the generators aren't gonna put out anything compared to, to what the mill has done, especially if they're, they're gas, uh.
Shouldn't be running other than to test.
Test, and then, you know, the, the outage here and there, but the only issue, I thought it was dust during, during,
Construction.
The first, uh, phase, when they're digging and, and demolishing old foundations and things, but they're.
It's still going to be a power plant, sitting on the site still.
That's not on this site though.
No, I mean, Eames still has.
But that's not whole ocean's concern.
No, no, no.
And they do mention that, that at some point, they'll have a, they'll have a boiler room of sorts, you know, to heat the building and, and, uh, but still, it'd probably be natural gas, I would assume, in today's world. But nobody's gonna be in there shoveling coal into it, so.
Coal silo is gone.
We have to assume, because they're here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do you plan on heating the building?
Well, it does say in the boiler room, so, at sometime, at some point right now.
So, at, uh, at this point, uh, there will be boilers and, uh, we're not exactly sure of the size, but, um.
Right, I think it's a, they don't have the answer to it, but.
Yeah, so, there, there's, uh, there is natural gas, uh, service in the area, there's, there's also diesel, uh, in the area, but, uh, I'm sure the preferred route would be natural gas.
So the, the, the point being, I don't think there's gonna be any, thousands of times, last, millions of times less than emissions from the, from the paper mill. Uh, nine, any relevant detrimental effects of subterranean vibration from the land use are adequately mitigated?
Just the blasting, that's not temporary.
Totally controlled by DEP blasting regulations.
Yeah, so that's entirely.
And that's something that the, the blasting contractor has to, it has to deal with on a daily basis, so they know what they're doing.
It's not a permanent.
And there's a good outfit Maine.
So we're gonna move on, since no one's stopping me yet, the public safety standards. One, the quantity and quality of public and private drinking water supplies are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. I did see, um, you mentioned hydrants.
Yeah.
Um, and the letter from, from the water company mentioned if there are gonna be hydrants, they need to do a test to make sure, it sounds like to me that, to make sure that that ten inch main they're gonna install will be adequate? So at what point, you know, will we have that answer that, yeah, you don't wanna put a ten inch main and, and realize that you don't have enough to fill, to feed the hydrants?
There's already a ten inch water main, fire main system around that whole site, and even down into the power plant area.
The mill did have a pump station, which has been removed.
Um, hmm, the short answer is, we can work with Maine Water Company and have that done as soon as possible, because it, it's a test on the existing, uh, uh, system, and then what, what they expect for capacity, and we can certainly get them the, uh, the number of hydrants and the distances and, and, uh, work with them to finalize that.
And in that, in that packet, I, there's two, three letters that you've been corresponding with Maine Water.
Yeah.
About some of these issues, and nowhere was there any, uh, any issues on their part from water, so it looked like there was.
It was just a question, I, the only question I saw was raised about the hydrant, if the.
Right, and I, I think that's just kind of a, a pressure situation versus a, a, you know, the volume of water, so, um, yeah, we will, uh, we'll work with them to finalize that.
Deputy Fire Chief's comment was that there's six hydrants, they were happy with the number of hydrants, the only concern that they had, they weren't too worried about it, because they're pretty comfortable with what coal oceans is capable of doing, but they may need to put some fire pumps in, because the mill did have those, um.
Correct.
So that when there was a fire in the mill, which happened, they'd have to kick those on, because the pressure would draw.
A booster pump or something, yeah.
Yeah, but that was it, because it's not the end of the line.
Yeah, the applicant is willing to do what they need to do to make it safe.
And that's what the, that's what the fire department said, so.
Now, the existing ten inch fire main loop, pretty much around the two large buildings already exists, but it also has a side set of hydrants to provide the, the, the. That's part of the fire system that.
I just, I just raised the question that, that was in the, the Maine Water letter.
Yeah, but those, those things have to be still in service.
All right, number two, the safety and sufficiency of energy supply services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. I think there's plenty of energy available and, uh, they need to keep their equipment running twenty-four seven, uh, so the generators, I don't think, I don't think there's any energy issue.
No, there's a substation that's path right into.
Number three, public safety services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use.
Nothing on that one.
Okay, number four, public wastewater facilities are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use.
They've commented that they had no concerns.
Yeah. Five, the proper management of solid waste is adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. Same, I think there was a letter in there from, uh,
Point two ways.
On pre. Six, the safety and sufficiency of streets and sidewalks are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. What's that?
Actually, that's not even important.
Oh, I have just a couple of questions on that.
Okay.
Full buildup, how much product will you be producing a day, will you be shipping out?
At, at full capacity?
Yeah.
At ten thousand metric ton?
Yeah. Uh, how is that leaving your facility, how's it gonna leave? Is it leaving by land, by sea?
Gary Robinson, uh, about a hundred and thirty-eight tons of product a day be going out.
How will it be leaving your facility?
Uh, the, uh. Leave the processing, it's gonna be offsite, so it'll just be, just in round, in, in totes on ice.
But I think he's asking a train, truck.
Oh, truck, sorry.
Still substantially less traffic than what was there by the prior use.
Good, thank you. So the processing is some, is someplace else?
We're, we're contemplating processing offsite, um, in the, uh, Bucks Town.
In the heritage park.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
Coal processing planned out.
There's plenty of space out there for another.
I have available.
Some large spaces out there.
We got a deal for you. So I'm gonna move on to specific use standards, all right? Anybody have any issues?
Typically just parking, but I don't think we're concerned about parking in there. All right, it's one of those difficult ones we discussed.
Yeah, we usually haggle over parking at this point.
Well, and they, they still have the lot right across the street.
They do.
Show them.
Yeah, yeah, right. And no need for a site visit and, uh.
Nope.
So dimensions, dimension objectives, any issues with?
It's all covered in the site plans very well. Good deed research.
What's that?
Good deed research, yeah.
So we've come to the end, now we go back and determine whether we, uh, we report our findings.
A finding for each section. Ask it as a, uh.
So with regard to environmental standard, or, excuse me, environment standards.
Move that there is clear and convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusions that the above applicable environmental objections have been met.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Special area standards.
I move there is clear and convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusion that the above applicable areas objectives have been met.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Local area standards?
I motion that there is clear convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusion that the above applicable local area objectives have been met.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Public safety standards?
I move there is clear and convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusion that the above applicable public safety objections have been met.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Specific use standards?
I would think that probably, since we don't think that it's them applicable, we don't really have to take any action on that.
Okay. And dimensions?
I believe there are no applicable dimensions objectives, so.
Covered very well in the site plans, really.
So the decision, based on.
We don't have to vote on those?
No. I, I don't believe that. Do you disagree? I mean, did you do? Based on the conclusions of the planning board as documented above, the proposed land use will not have any impact that is contrary to the purposes of appendix K land use, and therefore the application is approved.
They haven't done their fees yet, so we have to put it.
Contingent upon the fee, so one question that, can you go ahead?
Well, I was just gonna say it is to be, um, it, it's approved, but it's, uh, you end up contingent upon receipt of the, uh, air emissions license and the SLADA and all of those things that you're applying for. DEP permits.
And it was mentioned early on, uh, that you would be asking for a waiver of the time limit.
Yeah, an extension.
An extension, so are you going to come to us at two years and ask for an extension, or are you doing that tonight?
No, we'd like to request that tonight to, to push it to five years.
All right.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it, we grant that extension.
Wonderful.
Any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
It's reasonable.
And, but you, you mentioned that, uh, you thought that the total build out would be ten years, so at the end of, as we get close to five, you're gonna come back and say, hey, can we have five more, or?
That's, yes, that's the thought, or, yes.
So at what point, um, five, five years down the road, a huge change of direction happens, um, you know, I guess, as, as long as any changes in plan are identified, uh, even currently.
I don't think we can speak to that, we have to wait and see what's going on five years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what I, what I just read, I guess that would have been a motion, um, that that, or, do we need to vote on that, because we've already voted on everything else, so, so that it's been approved, correct?
You can correct, please.
Oh, yeah. Contingent on, contingent on all, all the necessary permits and fees being met. Okay?
So, uh, sorry, just for clarification, uh, there was a mention of the air license, air emissions license itself, um, even though, uh, there, there is some communication of air emissions in the SLADA application, the actual license doesn't need to be signed until we get to construction, so, um, if we could just say the SLADA permit, then the air emissions license, uh, the air, air emissions license would have to come before any construction of buildings, but not necessarily before the, the first phase of the excavation, so, uh, we'd rather not have, uh, the town need the air emissions license for the excavation, just to, does that make sense?
No.
I think it's a condition of a SLADA permit. In order to get the SLADA permit, you have to have the air license.
We, we have to have communication from the air bureau that a license is eminent.
Okay, so conditional approval upon SLADA permit?
We already have air emissions just on the demolition that have to stay in force.
Absolutely.
And you're doing demolition too. Part of construction, you're doing demolition and excavation first.
Right, but an air emissions license is different than a, a erosion control plan.
So you want.
Dust control is air.
So, so the, the air emissions license, we're not planning on getting until the fish, the freshwater building is ready for construction. Because that has to do with, uh, the, the emergency generators and, and, uh, um, HVAC units and things like that, so which, which, um, we won't be getting a permit for that until we get to the construction drawings of those.
The air emission license does not include dust control during demolition?
That is, that is true.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a separate item altogether, it's, it has to do with the equipment being used in the facility. You have to know how many million BTUs of everything, and if it's less than a million, you don't have to worry about it. But they will have, the generators obviously will, will require it.
And, and construction equipment, blasting, all that stuff is, is covered under separate regulations under DEP for erosion control, dust control, smoke control.
So I, I think basically whatever permits and licenses you require to, to get to where you want to go to start digging and demoing foundations, that's what we're, that's our contingency.
That's where you wanna be too, right, yes, I, that's the way we understand it as well.
Are you all set with that, Luke, is that?
Yep, and that's what it will say in the minutes.
Okay.
So I made the motion, I would, I would, I would move to amend that motion to remove the the air, uh, yeah, air emissions license from that, just to make it clean.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Very good. Sounds fine.
Good luck.
Are you building tomorrow? The only, how many, do you open it for once a year to pine wood members to win? Have a, have a tank for all the old, the old root stock. Just take a two minute break. Just take a two minute break.